The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Go through the door and do your stuff.
I should give you some fire department meeting.
I don't know, they usually have food. Did you bring the food? Do we have snacks?
Oh, it's gonna be fire department meeting.
And the next thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the last meeting.
It sent those out, yes, Monday, Tuesday. This week it's messed up. Holiday, but did you see them?
I saw them and I didn't see anything except being. So. I make a motion, we approve the minutes of October second, twenty twenty four.
Those are motions by Chris, second by Mark to approve the minutes of October second. All those in favor?
Hello, hi, Don.
And next is department reports.
Evening. So, uh, fire prevention month, so we had a pretty busy week this past week. Started on, uh, Sunday, October sixth was our fall harvest sale at the Heimor. We ended up raising just about twelve hundred dollars. Sale of pumpkins and apples and some baked goods. Again, that was for our Richard Peenel again scholarship, so appreciate the community to come out and help sponsor that for us. On Tuesday, October eighth, uh, we had about a hundred and twenty kiddos from three K through the second grade that came down and visited the fire station. Uh, we went through our fire safety trailer, uh, get a tour of the station, did fire safety messages and built the trucks and just had a, had a good time with all of them and ended up, I think, about fifty smoke detectors for all the first graders. Something we do every year and always look forward to doing that. Um, Saturday, uh, we capped off fire prevention week with our sparky breakfast. A little disappointed with the turnout. I think we only had about a hundred, hundred and five people from uh, the community that joined us for breakfast. Uh, that was down probably above third what we averaged in previous years. Could have been the weather with the windstorms and power out and jizz. There was a lot of sport events going on. It'd been maybe poor advertisement on our part. Uh, we talked with the auxiliary this past week about maybe trying to do something a little different than just relying on on Facebook, you know, get the message out. We need to go back to putting up signs around town, just advertise a little better. But the auxiliary did, you know, they did well, uh, just the same, um, for that fundraiser, but could have been a little better. We were pretty busy that day and we ended up going on a couple of calls during our breakfast, so we kind of had to scatter a few of our firefighters and, uh, cover calls in town and after being, you know, stationed for five hours, by the end of ten, getting things cleaned up, we all got home. Uh, I only sat on my couch for maybe five minutes. Called out again for usually the needs, uh, for, at our excellent, well, education of people and as soon as some of us got to that call, we got diverted to another call and he's ended up doing a brush fire from the downed power line, so it was a pretty busy day. Um, last night, uh, Aisha and myself, we did a, a tour of the fire station for our Girl Scout troop. Uh, that was fun. We had about a dozen girls. Uh, the main purpose of that was they wanted to learn about the fire department and female firefighters, so, um, Aisha was gracious enough to spend about a half hour with the girls and talked about, uh, female firefighting and had all kinds of questions about everything that his son regarding the fire service and then we gave him a tour of the station, the truck. We walked him down to the nine eleven memorial park and the museum. That was a real big hit for them as well. Uh, over the next two weeks, uh, firefighters are going to be training on, uh, down firefighters where we have to go and rescue one of our own. And we're going to do a refresher training on the use of gas meters. Then the last thing I got is, uh, Thursday, October thirty first, uh, we're going to do our usual annual Halloween event at the station from four P M to probably right around eight P M. Uh, and our candy, the auxiliary will be selling hot dogs, hamburgers, there's a fundraiser. About, um, C S, we will have a few firefighters down at the museum this year. Firehouse Museum, uh, here in our candy at the same time. And just watch, you know, watch over the memorial park and make sure nothing happens down there. That's all I got for you guys. If you've got any questions.
Thank you. And next is, uh, select order board. Oh, excuse me.
I don't really have anything other than, uh, Wilson Pond Road, as you know, was saved. Um, Tony's happy with the result. They have, last week they, um, worked on the driveways that had a significant drop. So anybody that's still out there that still has a bump, they're going to get back to you, but, um, they took care of the, the large drops on Thursday for the weekend so that people didn't have to worry about that, but they're, they're, they still have more work to do. They're going to do, they have to do the, um, uh, the sides of the road to make sure that, you know, there isn't the big drop offs when you layer more pavement on there, so that will be, um, forthcoming. So anybody who's over there that knows about that, you can tell that they do know that there's still some work to do with people's driveways, but you just haven't gotten to it. I don't know if they were out there today or not. I haven't spoke to Tony today, but.
Winthrop, their section.
Yeah, the whole road was done at once, so instead of, um, we kind of piggybacked on their, um, paving contract for that road because, as you know, it Winthrop and then Monmouth and then so instead of kind of having that gap in there, we decided that we would do it with them, so we're going to pay a portion of Winthrop's bill, which is corresponding to the number of tons that were put on the Monmouth stretch, so. Yeah, so the whole thing was done at once, so it won't have a, it won't be, it won't be noticeable when you hit the town line.
Uh, Wagon Road paving. There's a small section, at least last time I checked, I haven't been by in four or five days, but there's a small section at the bottom of the hill where a culvert was replaced. And that has not been paved yet.
Okay, so the, the, the patching work through a December storm is done. Um, we've had some, um, comments that some people aren't happy that it wasn't just completely paved, that section. Um, we can't do that. We're using federal money, so we can only fix what was broken.
Sure.
Um, the, the part that you're talking about is down by the bridge where the, the culvert was?
That's the bottom of the hill, kind of. Uh, there was a culvert down by the bridge at the very bottom of the hill that had been replaced.
Previously, right?
Uh, previously.
I think the former director had.
I don't know. Last time I went through, um, which was about five or six days ago.
Okay.
The patching on the hill had been done, but not at the bottom. I don't know if it happened sequentially. Maybe it did. Maybe the contractor was.
I can look into it. I don't know if it's the same. I, I, I'm not sure what you're talking about, but I'm, I'm, I'll ask Tony about it.
It's where the culvert was replaced.
I will, I will ask Tony about that. I'm not sure.
Anyway, I got some, is it still?
It, it's, it's the right, it's the right side where the culvert is.
On the way towards the bridge from coming down?
Going toward the bridge on the right. Okay, it's, it's been undermined two or three storms and it's been patched a couple of times. I think that's the section. Do you know? Yeah, yeah, I'm totally sorry.
Is that what he's talking about? Okay.
So, I thought that was part of the whole patching.
What's part of all the washouts that happened on one?
Yeah.
It happened on.
I walked it. It happened on, in that December storm?
I walked it with the mind. They did look at the culvert. That section all the way to the top of the hill.
Okay. Okay, I will, I will, I will ask Tony. I'm, I'm unfamiliar, so let me, let me circle back out of kind.
People are running impatient. And we're running out of paving too.
The contractor may have run out of time. When I went through the day they were paving, it was like three thirty, quarter to four. And they still had a huge section of the upper part to do, and I thought it was funny because our town guys were there flagging. Right, these guys are going to be on overtime here because, yeah, so they just may not have gotten to it too. It was late in the day and they still had quite a bit to do, so.
And sometimes I know they, you know, a small job like that, they'll sort of tack it on to something else that they're doing close by, so it could be they're planning on doing that before they wrap up the season, but I don't know.
I will ask. I'm, I'm, I'm unsure. I do know they've been out, I do know that they went out there and we finally got it, uh. I'll have to check. Let me just put it that way. This thing is chasing us for invoices. They want us to be done with this project.
Blackboard voice.
I did go to the county meeting, uh, which was in Augusta at the commissioners this weekend. It was last Thursday night, I think. And they, um, they seem to understand that we only hear from them when they want, they send us the bill. And they want to communicate with us better. Joe Petrowski, I think, represents our particular, Artis County. And he's eager to come and, oh, listen. Um, also the physician, there's a physician that, uh, wants a grant, I think it's a little bit over three hundred thousand dollars. He would, um, he would go with rescue units and thought that, um, his services, um, could really help out and uh, you know, um, particularly where they're critical injuries. Um, there was also a, an officer from the jail, he was talking about, um, recidivism, recidivism. Um, which is about eleven percent, I, I, I think in, I don't know, jail. And, um, um, he's saying that they receive patients or inmates who come in who are addicted and um, by the time they're off of the drugs and stuff, they're off to the main state prison or out or something, so. Um, they're working hard to cut the rate of people coming back. So that was the long and short of that meeting. The, um, Winthrop Town Manager was there, who was quite, quite active.
Yeah, they got hit. Uh, Winthrop has more waterfront than any other community in the state, believe it or not, the number of ponds they have. Um, they got hit even harder than we did with the county tax. Oh, uh, they're very interesting.
In our case, it was twenty-two percent?
Thirty, thirty, the total county budget was thirty, I think it was a thirty-five, thirty-six percent increase, the county budget. It was a lot of money for us. It was a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Started out at like fifty and they brought it down to like thirty-eight, so.
Yeah, right, right, exactly, yeah.
Starting to know way worse than it ended up, but it's still really bad.
Okay, very hard. Is it considered a very wealthy county, even more so than we are because of their waterfront, but.
While we're still on sweatwater reports, um, as we move into budget season, um, knowing that we took some funds out of the undesignated fund balance to cover costs for this year. Um, I think it's going to be critical that department heads look at, um, a, a two or three percent reduction in their budgets, um, moving into this next year. Um, so we can try to hold taxes at the same rate they're at, uh, um, to keep doing, you know, obviously we just had a significant increase and even to have a two or three percent increase for next year. Um, I, I am not in favor of that. I think we need to do everything we can to hold our taxes at the rate that they're at. Especially until we get through the reevaluation, um, a, and moving forward, and I know there's things that every department needs, but um, I think we just heard it loud and clear from the taxpayers that they're willing to sacrifice, um, in some areas to not have their taxes continue to rise year after year after year. We know there's some things we don't have any control over. Um, from benefits to, uh, the union contracts that we have to, there, there are going to be some, some things that cost more that we don't have any control of. Uh, but if we start with a little reduction everywhere, we may be able to make it through, um, and keep the budget flat moving forward for next year.
Uh, we had a meeting of the Trails Committee uh, last night, and they are appreciative of the TIF funding that, uh, um, was approved at our last meeting. And, uh, they have finalized, I think we have very close to a final draft of the survey that we are hoping to distribute at the November election.
It is, uh, current, uh, sorry, I'm blanking on her name right now, but she came in and brought paper.
Catherine.
Yep, she came in, brought paper copies and the flyers are posted in the town office.
Okay.
She's going to send me an electronic version of the flyer that she asked me to put on Facebook, so survey is out there, okay, at this point, just, just so you know.
Excellent, yeah, people are beginning to vote. Uh, so I'm glad that she's making progress there and we've got a uh, consultant, uh, coming for a day or two to do site visits at Trails and begin the process of the evaluation.
I wanted to mention, uh, about the, uh, back air, back parking area of Compton Hall. Uh, it was, uh, crack sealed, something at five thousand dollars worth of, uh, back there, so to, to keep it from further breaking or falling or whatever.
Yep, and Dennis took that out of his, um, maintenance budget, comes to know, he, him and Tony had a discussion. Tony really didn't have, it wasn't, it wasn't really budgeted for, but Dennis felt that it was important. After talking to Tony, felt it important enough that he took that out of his, uh, Compton Hall maintenance budget line, so that's where that money came from.
Yes, bro, I beg you, I guess I should mention that, uh, Friends of the Cobblesey Watershed is having problems, uh, financial problems, the, uh, the new director that they'd had for maybe a year and a half resigned. And, uh, and there's a number, they had, uh, uh, six full-time members or employees and forty seasonal employees and, uh, they're, uh, they are having troubles with cash flow. Trying to reorganize. They do provide, uh, a, a lot of things to keep lakes, um, free of, of invasives and so forth, and, and it's, uh, and of course, they, there's problems with, uh, in Mesocook and there's problems with Combessey. They're having a meeting, uh, Thursday at five o'clock, uh, tomorrow.
To be clear, this is the Friends of the Cobblesey Watershed District. This is not the Cobblesey Watershed District. The district is what shows up on your property tax bill. It's not them. It's the Friends of the Cobblesey Lake. What, what they call them, also Cobblesey Lake, Friends of the Cobblesey Lake Association.
Cobblesey, Friends of Cobblesey Watershed.
Okay, yeah, so they're the friends out, they're not the, they're not the government, quasi-governmental entity. They're a five, they're a nonprofit group that, you know, that does the boat inspections and stuff, but it's not the people that help us monitor the lake levels or manage our dams or, but that's a different group. Just want to make it clear because it's confusing to even to me sometimes, who does what?
Okay. On to public comment. Then, uh, next, uh, item is to consider a motion to reconsider the social media policy. As requested by Mr. Packley.
I guess I did, didn't I? Well, I, uh, since our last meeting where we approved the social media policy.
Just point of order, since we already voted on this, it has to be motioned and seconded, Harry, to discuss.
Okay, then I make a motion that we reconsider the social media policy.
I'll second that so we can have a discussion.
Thank you, Mark.
This is motion by Kent, seconded by Mark to, uh, uh, reconsider the social media policy. All those in favor? Chris is saying.
So it's been, uh, pointed out to me that the social media policy that we approved at our last meeting might have some, uh, negative impact on employees' First Amendment rights when they are speaking as private citizen. And I think it's worth us spending some time uh, considering how we might be able to tweak the policy in a way so that we can ensure that the town's interests are protected. But that, uh, we are also perceived in the community as a good employer and are willing to hear some points of view that sometimes we might disagree with. I think there's some folks here in the audience that have some scenarios that would be worth kind of going through, but this is the reason I've made the motion to give us an opportunity to think it through and perhaps find some alternative language or approaches that would, uh, reach a happy medium.
So the original policy.
So, can I, can I add to this, like, so in response to the email that you all received, here is a, here is a draft that went to the town's personnel attorney and the, uh, she has some adjusted, some suggested, adjusted, like, if you still want, you, you, in case, you, you have one draft, I'll make, there are a couple here if anybody wants it. Um, so those are, um, it doesn't, doesn't, doesn't change very much the language, it reorganizes it. Um, and removes some of the, um, it removes some of the points about, um, what, how, how, uh, it changes some of the language about personal Facebook posts, so you're happy, you're, you're more than welcome. I just got that today. That's why it wasn't posted online or in your packet. Obviously, the email came out over the weekend, so I sent this and asked them to respond to me by tonight, so I got it today.
Thank you.
Um, so there's a, there's a a, a slightly modified version of what's in there. The only, the only, the only, um, the only, uh, clear objection um, to any of the, any of the comments that were made is that comments on town-owned Facebook pages should not be allowed. And I have an email right here from the town's attorney, which makes that very clear, that, um, it is a, it is a, it is a huge liability for the community to have public comments allowed on Facebook, on, on our town pages we have to monitor. And, um, those all have to be captured, so we would have to purchase a software program, because obviously any of you u, u, understand that if you post something on a, on somebody else's Facebook page, you have the right as the, as the author of that post to take it down anytime you want. We can't do that. As soon as it's posted on a town page, we have to capture that information and we have to keep it to comply with F O A. So if someone goes in after the fact and then deletes it, then we, we can't produce that anymore and it, it, it becomes an issue. Um, so the general, the general request, um, we got into this over the summer with a, um, anti-policing, um, page that came after our police department and we went through this F O A information and, um, uh, to no fault of anybody, they just didn't know is that the police department was pulling those comments down because they were negative in nature and that was complete violation of, of F O A law. So we got kind of, you know, slapped on the wrist and the town's attorney requested that best practice is just to not allow, um, comments on any of the town's Facebook pages. Everything else that was mentioned in the email you have, I have no concerns with. You can see the revised a, agenda in there. This is, this is your policy. As you know, you folks requested me to do this, to write this policy, so I created one for you. It's a combination of different towns' um, social media policies. Um, I tried to, for lack of a better word, I tried to dumb it down to the fact that we don't have a communications person, so some of the, as I said at the last meeting, some of the policies that are written like this are written for towns that have full-time communications people, so they're much more detailed. We don't really need that. Everybody just kind of, each department kind of runs their own thing. Um, the only, the only sense in any of this that it says the town manager has to approve it is just so that if there's some question about whether something should be posted or not, that I have the, I have the authority sort of on your behalf to say I don't want that up there. That's, that's kind of the idea, um. If there's any questions, I'm happy, um, to answer them, but that, that revised version is the response from the town's attorney to the comments that were made. I think it makes it a little, um, less, um, strict on personal page comments, um, but if you, uh, just to reiterate, it's, it's your policy. It goes in the employee handbook. You decide what's in there. You can make this any way that you feel is appropriate. And, um, and if, and, and like any employment policy, when this goes into the employee handbook, the employees will be required to sign it, just like anything else, whether it's the drug use policy or, you know, whatever it might be, um, that, that will happen. It was, this was presented at the last department head meeting. There was discussion about it. We didn't hand out the forms for people to sign because there was this, I had, I had heard there was a concern about whether it was, Ken had talked to me before that meeting, so we had, um, I held off on giving it to the employees, so at this point, there's going to be no, um, you can change this at, well, there's no impact, but you, it, it, the rank and file haven't seen it yet, so we can change it any, at, at your will at this point.
I, um, I know that it's been the tradition in other municipalities that when there is a policy change, that oftentimes they'll take their time to digest the policy change. Um, usually, I mean, I, I know at the, uh, in the legislature, uh, there's usually uh, three readings of a bill for this purpose. First time, or release it, let people think about it. The second time, maybe there's some changes that get recorded and the third time is sort of okay if we're all in agreement. Then we'll review those stuff, yeah. And so we kind of skipped that when we, when we voted on this policy, uh, the last time around. Um, and that's, I think, why I'm asking for the, the do-over. Uh, I, I, it, it seems to me like all of the concerns that have been expressed are reasonable and valid. Um, and it also seems like we should have a social media policy that, you know, sets out the expectations for employees so that people know clearly what, what's okay and what's not. And so, uh, so I'm wondering if based on these changes that Justin has gathered from our legal counsel, that maybe we can uh, as part of my motion, put a pause on implementing the policy while we digest these changes and maybe we come back to it at the next meeting with a fine-tooth comb and, uh, you know, and come to a, a final version that everyone can live with.
As a, I had, did you see, what, did you see anything that bothered you?
Well, I, I really haven't looked at it much, honestly, so. But I think we should be, we should be protective of town employees' rights, I mean, to speak their mind. So I'd like to look this over carefully. I agree with Kent that we should come back to this later.
And if you would, and if you would like, I mean, Paige, who's our personnel attorney from Jensen Beer, she's happy to discuss any of this with you if that is something that you want, just, just to throw it out there. If you want her, I'm sure I can get her on Zoom at, at some meeting if you would like to have the discussion with her. If not, that's fine too. I have an email here that I can give, follow you, sort of what the, you know, what the rules are. The thing is kind of in flux because it's, it used to, just a year ago, towns operated under the assumption all across the country that we could delete hateful or hurtful comments that were on town Facebook pages, just like you would on your own personal thing. And the Supreme Court has said that you cannot, so once you, once you kind of open up door, we cannot do anything about it. So you either basically, you leave it wide open so people can post whatever they want, or you don't do anything. So basically, the council's opinion or the town is that we're better to just not have that be a risk and just not allow any. But she can explain it. If you want her to come, just let me know. I can have her come if you, if you want to. There is certainly no hurry on this. There's nothing that's, nothing's, no offense to the fire department, nothing's on fire right now that makes us need to do anything. This was something that you, you folks had requested off and on. It was part of my performance review. I brought a policy forward because you asked me to. So take your time. I have no, I have no concerns about this at all. So don't do whatever you think is the right thing to do.
Legislature, for example, says they have a second reading or a third reading, do they actually read it? I mean.
I have the bills are passed in the back room, not even properly.
I mean, do they, I think it all went and read it and then come back.
There is a waiting period involved before reading goes to its.
It's read aloud?
You can request that if you, if you wish.
But it doesn't normally get read aloud.
Well, a legislator could request it. It would actually take up the time of 151 people for someone to sit and listen to a bill being read. So that's not usually a popular thing to do if you're trying to persuade people to cooperate.
So, so in some communities, right, so a lot of times in towns that have councils that don't have town meeting, they require first and second reading. So if you look, like Winter Pass to do that, the city of Augusta does it. It's because it's a council form of government and the public doesn't have the opportunity to, they don't really have a say other than showing up at a meeting and voicing their concern. So they make it so that it has to be read twice openly so that we don't have that. These are, these are employment policies, so these are things that are clearly within the board's purview to decide. So it would be unusual to have a first and second reading on an employment policy. Usually, first and second readings are done for ordinances, things like that with bodies in which they have the authority to approve them, which generally be a council form government. Here, you have the public, under, under the, under the situation we have here, you have to have a public hearing, which is done, which you folks hold when we, we approve an ordinance, and then it goes to the town meeting and the people get to decide whether to approve it or not. Usually, the first, second, third reading, some, some charters require them to do it three times. I mean, they can do whatever they want. Some of them allow them to waive the readings, push it through all at once, but that's, that's the general idea behind the two public readings and a council form of government.
What is your wish?
We have a motion in a second. We need to vote. I'm not exactly sure for what the vote is going to be, but.
Well, I sort of half amended my motion to say that we don't, that we don't undo the vote, but that we simply pause the implementation of the policy until we can digest the language that's in front of us. It's been suggested by the town manager and our, and our attorney.
And I just, would you like it brought back to your next meeting or are you looking for it to be pushed further than that? I'm just, I'm, I'm just curious, just, just so I know. You want to hear about it? We're going to have three meetings in October, so you're going to have it on.
So we'll have plenty of opportunity. Maybe we have a conversation with the town attorney at our next meeting and then make a reasoned decision at the following meeting.
And we will be focusing on the modified version?
That's a good starting point.
The original version that we.
Well, I mean, it seems to me like our legal counsel has moved the original version into this modified version and I'm happy to follow her advice.
My suggestion would be if you're gonna, if you're gonna move forward now that we've, now that she's, now that the concerns have been raised and that she, she changed it. If you're going to, if you're gonna postpone implementation that you work off of the new version, I think that makes the most sense. We don't, we don't want to work contrary to the town's legal advice, I don't think. That's my suggestion, but you, you folks get to decide it.
And what does that just leaves what we've done at the last meeting regarding it in limbo or?
Yeah, I would just kind of, maybe Kent, you can, maybe when you vote, you can just clarify the motion that you want to, you want to suspend implementation of, of the policy that you approved at the last meeting and that you want more time to discuss this in that way. I mean, I'm clear, but maybe just for the record, if you just, you just want to put that on there. We haven't, we haven't disseminated this to anybody. We haven't, we haven't given the, the forms to the department heads or anything, so it hasn't, it hasn't gone anywhere. So you approved that it's sitting on Lori's desk and she's on a mousetop this week, so nothing has happened. So you are, if you just clarify that, we can just take our time. That's, that's perfectly fine. I have no care at all.
Yeah, I would love an opportunity to speak if you'll give me, so I can share some of the background and my concerns. Is that appropriate? I don't know.
I would say.
Discussion amongst yourselves, but is it open for public comment?
That's up to you, Chair.
You're the chair with the gavel.
But I, I think, I know you had the terms and with all of us and with what was, and now you have a revised.
I haven't even read the revision yet. It's just righted to me and I haven't even looked at it. I would love an opportunity to stand five minutes just to chat.
Okay.
Thank you. So I want to thank, thank Justin for, you know, answering my email by, you know, sharing it with the attorney to review it, get some revisions. Much appreciated. I haven't seen the revisions, so I really can't comment on them. I just wanted to share that, you know, I like what Kent's saying about town governance as far as policy. I just feel like this policy was introduced at your wish and, and, and Justin, you know, did his best effort to introduce things for you to load on. But I feel like it was a little bit rushed and after reading it, as a department head that has 33 town employees, and I get it, we're kind of quasi-government when it comes to town employees. I don't think any of us have seen a town employee handbook. Certainly haven't signed one. That's something we probably should have a discussion on, but certainly, you know, we want to follow, you know, town policy. But this policy as it was written, some of us had some concerns about, you know, potentially violating the First Amendment rights. So that was the whole reason for Justin. I, I tried to bring it to Justin's attention, but, you know, we just, we crossed paths. So I put it in an email over the weekend so you see it all, so you'd have time to digest it before this meeting. Really, the, I'm in agreement with the social media policy. I think we could have one. I just think we need to be careful about what goes into it and I think having two or three readings would be appropriate. And I hope that you would, you know, listen to some folks, you know, and can hear us so that we can share, you know, some thoughts because as far as the fire department is concerned, we embrace social media. The whole comments section, I think, is a bad idea. Might be good for the town government as far as the town's Facebook page or for the fire department. We, we advertise events. We advertise road closures, power outages. We get questions and comments from the townspeople on our social media site, follow-ups on all of these posts. We get unbelievable positive comments in a world of so much negativity. The positive comments, it's all of us coming back is that, you know, serve in our town as firefighters. You take that all away and I, I just feel like it's, it's gonna, not going to be good for the town. It's certainly not going to be good for the fire department. I feel like we're censoring our own town citizens by not allowing them to comment. I get what Justin's saying and certainly there's a few bad apples out there. And I feel like that there's got to be some rules out there that if somebody's, you know, gonna go and try to undermine our town government or our departments, there's got to be ways that we can, you know, take snapshots of those, those, those posts, reach out to those people, give them opportunity to maybe delete their own posts and then, and then give them a timeframe. And if they don't, then we should have the right as the administrator of that, that Facebook platform to remove them or block. Long as we do certain steps, you know, and maybe that's something we can ask the attorney, you know, are we under the legal authority to be able to do that? Long as we do certain steps. You know, so that's one example as far as a public comment. The other comment I had about the policy change was having to go to Justin and, or the, she said Justin, sorry, go to the town manager and get approval to post things about department equipment or logos or uniforms. I think there's a line where you got to say, you know, it's kind of unnecessary. At least I'll talk on behalf of the fire department. We post daily pictures. I mean, I just did it yesterday on my personal site where I posted pictures of the Girl Scout troops wearing fire department helmets in front of the fire apparatus. Well, according to that policy, I shouldn't have done that. I should go and put the town manager first, get approval to post something on my personal website or the fire department site about something that has town equipment in it. All good intentions, what I was doing, and I'm sure town manager would have no objections to me doing that. But if I have to do that on a daily basis, and that's how frequent we do social media, it's just, it's going to get overwhelming for him, for me. I think there's got to be a fine line where he should be able to rely, you know, maybe on the department heads who oversee those platforms, you know, to give us some wiggle room. I don't know if the revision, I've, you know, addressed that. Certainly, there should be language in there that I shouldn't be going as a town official and, you know, stating stuff against another employee of the town or the town office person. I get all that. You know, I, I would, I would not do that. That's not my character. I don't know, you have to put that all in writing, but if you do, you know, so be it. The last thing I have to say is just, when you start talking about personal sites and what we say on our personal sites, I feel like that's, that's infringing on our First Amendment rights and I don't think that's right. I think we should be able to voice it, not too, as long as it's reasonable or not undermining, you know, our employee's position or our employer. I get that, but I just feel like it, it's, it's something that we need to be careful about. So hopefully, you know, after tonight's discussion, certainly I would welcome any of my firefighters that have a few comments they want to share. Now is an opportunity while we have you here so that when we look at the revisions, maybe there's something else that by talking about it, we can discuss it and make sure that this final policy that gets rewritten will hopefully incorporate some of our. Anybody else want to comment? What we have before?
Sure, Chief, and, and if I can just respond to one thing, Chief, just, no, feel free to come up here, you're welcome. My intention was never to limit your ability to put, you know, you guys doing your good work out there. The, the reason, language, right, and policies is usually written kind of broad so that you can, so that you can restrict certain behavior. So let's just take, let's just take an extreme example of a public works person using a town truck and putting a swash sticker up behind them on a flag. That is inappropriate, right? I think, I think we all, I'm just using an extreme example to show you. I have never had any concerns with anything that you or your department has ever posted on Facebook. And this is, this is not directed towards you. This was something that the board had asked me to create.
Oh, when you put it in policy and it's applied, why?
I do understand that.
You might be okay with that, but what about the next town?
You are completely correct, so I am, I am, I am happy for this discussion.
Yeah.
So I just want to make that clear to you and to your firefighters. This has nothing to do with me coming after the fire department. I just, I just want you to know that. That's not, that was not my intention at all. I figured.
What am I supposed to say?
You know, I'll get my name sewed on somewhere in the morning. Those of you that don't know, I spent 14 years of a full-time fire chief. I dealt with unions, I dealt with city councils, and I spent a whole lot of money on lawyers. Arguing over various issues and going in front of federal arbitragers. I guess what kind of surprised me tonight was to find out that this ever went through our labor attorney, I think is what you.
I sent it to her based on the concerns, but yes, it's a, it's a, it's a accumulation of multiple towns' policies which are of, of towns of certain sizes, so I do do that. All little towns do that occasionally.
They cut to base. We all, we all do.
We make decisions about whether we want to pay somebody $250 an hour to read something that seems to have passed towns that are much bigger than ours, so kind of like, so sometimes you do that and some, and maybe this one was a mistake. I mean, that, that, that's, I'm, I'm, I'm open to that. I'm open to that criticism as well.
My big issue, I got in the fire department, first of all, Paige, I mean, I just feel red flag when I, you know, I had some discussions. First Amendment rights are not going to be stomped on by anybody. And it's not you in this council. What happens, you know, you get this policy here, three years from now, you've retired or gone on to some place that pays $200,000 a year. And you all come to your senses and get off the board and other people, you know, are here and they see that policy and they decide to crank it around, do something else with it. That's what my feeling was. Once that thing is ironclad and it's, it's kept and implemented, you're going to live with it. Appreciate you letting us have the time and kind of responding to the chief's, we kind of let him do the do voice as opposed to, you know, 30 of us fired off emails saying that we, basically, that was real appropriate, so. Thank you.
I, my door is always open for, so if you want to call me personally, you can do that. You don't, this isn't a criticism of the chief or anything, but you don't, you don't have to loop them into every personnel issue. I think that I'm, I think I'm pretty reasonable and I think that I would let any of you come in and talk to me and express however you want to, whether it's by email or phone or showing up at the door. I very seldom turn people away even when I have better things to do, right? People come in from all kinds of things. Please feel free to just, just, just come talk to me when you have an issue.
Just one, one quick thing is I'm very appreciative of what you did. The only criticism, criticism I would have is put you just in an email and lied to say that what you were doing, get back to me or give some answers. get back to me or give some answers. I didn't know you were working on that. It would have saved me, um, you know, a lot of what is, what is sort of questions. I was kind of going through my head the last two days, because I was kind of nervous about sending this email, you know, and CC and all of you and the departments. Because I hadn't heard anything from anybody else, so I didn't know if everybody else was okay with the policy as it was written.
I understand that, Chief, but like, you could have also sent an email to me or called me. You have my cell phone number. I answer the phone on the weekends to the police chief all the time. And Donna, I was out mowing my lawn, like, in my opinion, this whole thing is totally unnecessary. So that's that.
And just to be clear, I read every agenda and every piece of written material prior to the meetings. As soon as the agenda is sent out and the homework is sent out, I read every single thing. So to say that it was passed without being read, I read every word of that. And that you know, is not fun to have somebody insinuate that it's not being read and digested prior to, so.
Apologize, Kristen, if that's how that came across. I got the impression from each of you after that policy was passed and voted on. There was a lot of questions being raised. It gave me the impression that you guys hadn't really read it in 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 its entirety and that Justin was simply just highlighting what the policy was about and then he voted on it. Joe, you said it tonight. Haven't really had a chance to 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 read anything, and so you weren't gonna comment.
I didn't have a chance to read this.
The new ones.
That 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 was my point, and I think having, you know, a second reading at least give more opportunity to maybe digest it a little more.
Jason, you wanted to say something?
Uh, yeah, just a quick comment about um the comment piece of this. I I'm not sure how much everybody uses social media, but it's an engagement platform. It's meant for a conversation. How many companies or organizations do you go out there and you see that every single one of their posts doesn't allow a comment? It's not really common, an odd thing to have there. You did say it was because of a record of keeping everything that gets posted there, and that is technologically possible within Facebook. You don't have to delete comments. Uh, we've had, you know, hit our page before and we hide that comment. That comment is still in the record. We can still see it from the administration side and still present all of that without having it still be out there for the public. There are ways that that can be addressed without having to just tell the public you're not allowed to comment on anything. I think that would be a more appropriate way to address it.
Well, Scarborough doesn't allow comments on their fire department page, Freeport doesn't allow on theirs. Um, Augusta, Lewiston, they do, but I know that they have somebody that sits there and monitors that day in, day out. I mean, if the fire department insists on having, you know, comments being allowed and there's a software program that captures all that, then if you want to have that as part of your budget, a software package that captures that, then that can be part of your budget. But if the town and the police department are not allowing comments and the attorney recommends that we don't allow comments, then I would do what town attorney recommends.
One of, one of the things I asked Justin today is the stuff that's posted on the town website or the police department page or whatever, are those still shareable? He said absolutely, still shareable. So with the, the social network thing we have going on around town, anything um typically is shared to two or three other sites that are all allowing comments. So once it gets shared from the town page to, you know, concerned citizens of Monmouth, people can comment all they want on the same exact post. But it's just not on the town site, so people are still gonna be able to comment.
Are you gonna see those responses or comments?
You will, because you, you would, because if it was shared to, I mean, you could share it on your personal page. And if people start commenting, it's now no longer on the town's page. It's now on your page or any of the other little Facebook groups that the town belongs to. There, there, you know, people are always sharing stuff from the town, so people know what's going on in town, and those comments are not gonna be restricted. I didn't know that until today.
I know, I know Dennis Price um shut down the comments for constant today, um, because he was following the policy that was passed. He he felt it was already implemented, so he acted on it. Perhaps that would be a good, you know, unless you tell him not to do that, but maybe that'd be a good opportunity to kind of gauge by what he just did, you know, how that happens for that organization and that platform. You know, till till we finally revise this and decide what we're gonna do as a town.
And the police have had theirs shut down all summer, correct?
Yeah, I can't remember exactly. Sometime this summer, we, yeah, Dana manages their page. And after we were following, the chief and I were dealing with the town attorney and he directed Dana to stop allowing comments on the police department pages.
And that's all shared out, because this morning I saw, you know, shared and commented on the burglary at Hills, so, you know, from the Facebook. I mean, it was shared from the Monmouth BD page to another person's page, and the only reason I saw it and knew about it was somebody that you know, is my friend, so I was looking at something else, I saw that, so, and there were comments under it, so.
Well, and I I can also think of, uh, you know, some very positive Facebook interactions from, say, the Bangor Police Department, who do a really good job of moderating their page, generating public enthusiasm and support, and actually being kind of funny.
And I'm sure Bangor has an employee that sits there and does that, so.
I, I don't know, but.
Every comment that hits that page notifies my phone and notifies the chief's phone immediately, no matter where I am.
So the town attorney can refer to you, so I guess that's the thing. I mean, we, I do not want to not do what the town attorney is telling us is best practice. So I guess if I'm here to do what's right for the town and people voted for me to make those decisions, then I am going to listen to what the attorney tells us to do.
Okay, well, let me make a suggestion then. We'll spend two hundred and fifty dollars an hour to have the attorney attend our next meeting, and we all can have a conversation with the attorney about what's possible and what's legal and what other, what other municipalities are doing to do, you know, what's legally required at the lowest cost.
She mentioned that she's available, so just, just let me know. I just, I I just need to know that that's what the majority of you want, and I'm happy to invite her to attend.
So I'm, I would, after we're done with this motion, I'll make that motion.
That one doesn't have to be, if I just get head nods from three of you that you want to do that, that's perfectly fine. They would, they also have an opinion, yes, so I could, if if you would rather have them, I can try to schedule them as well.
They free? So there you go.
Whichever, whichever you would prefer, just tell me what you want and I will do it.
Well, who wrote these, these red lines here?
This right here is Paige Eggleston from Jensen Baird.
It makes sense to have her.
That's our town. Probably would be useful. MMA will not, will not speak to the specifics of those edits, right? Of course, as you, you know, as an attorney, you're not gonna speak on someone else's behalf.
I should continue to build on what our attorneys already invested here.
We have, we don't engage in a lot of litigation. We have money in the budget to pay for this thing. It's that this is not, this is not gonna blow any budget here, so if you would, if you would like her to come, as I offered, that this is completely reasonable and you're more than welcome to have that discussion.
And we can be on
And I can invite her.
We can be on the record with this, so the public can.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, it's a completely public, right?
Let's do it.
Okay, I will, I will endeavor to have her here at your next meeting, but if she's not available, I will endeavor to have her at the one after that. How about that? Does that make sense?
And in the meantime, we have a motion on the table which basically says
Do nothing.
Let's hold off implementing whatever policy uh we might have voted on last time until we have a chance to fully think it through.
That's been seconded, right?
That has been seconded, I believe you.
But you agree?
All, all those in favor of this? Uh, next is to consider developing a zoning ordinance.
So I talked to, I talked to Isabel, who's doing the comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan committee. She is, she is available to help us with this if we want her to do it. KV cog is also available to do it. KV cog could probably do it for for close to free. Isabel thinks it would be about sixteen thousand dollars, so it would be a budget issued for next year. And um I would not recommend moving anything forward until the comp plan is approved. Because zoning is usually layered on top of the comprehensive plan. So until the comp plan committee decides what they want for the next ten years, or the community, I should say, not just the committee, but the community as a whole, the zoning ordinance usually is, is something that's kind of dropped on top of that comp plan. So we need a comp plan first, and then we could do a zoning ordinance, but we have um options so that are we still looking at, at a June? Hopefully, fingers crossed and all that stuff. Um, so at the next town meeting, the comp plan will get approved. So um if we're, if we're pretty confident in that, we could, we could put money or leave money in the budget. It's kind of built into the cake at the moment because the comp plan money is in there. So we could, we could reduce that from, I think it's like thirty thousand probably to like fifteen, because she said she thought it was sixteen thousand. Or cog could do it for maybe less, because we can use federal grant money if, if um, if KV cog does it. And instead of having Isabel do it, but I know that the planning board and everybody's comfortable with Isabel, so maybe that's where we want to go. I don't know.
Our trouble with the comp plan, writing the comp plan now, is we don't want to put something in the comp plan that will negate the avenue to go into zoning if the town so desires to do so. So we need to have an opinion on if zone, if we come back to you and say that zoning is gonna work in this particular case, we're not gonna put it in the complaint, but we have to make sure that there's no stops, no blockage. The next year or two years from now, we can put up for a limited zoning or do something to fix a problem that we've it, it, you know, come up with.
Right, right, so like the comp plan, I think, I think the draft right now, correct me if I'm wrong, is like, it shows like North Monmouth by Tech Tech and all that and all the way down Main Street right now, right? It's considered the growth area. So if you were to present zoning and you had that discussion, you would allow more density in those growth areas, and you might also allow businesses to be built right up to the sidewalk. Where in areas where you're trying to preserve rural residential area, you would say that the house, you know, that things have to be back a hundred feet from the road or whatever, you know, to 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 preserve that rural kind of character. So that's kind of the stuff that has to kind of jive with itself, the comp plan versus, versus a zoning ordinance when you lay it over. So um if Isabel was to start, or anybody was to start working on zoning, they're gonna look at that comp plan and they're gonna say, well, the town said that, you know, Main Street is high density, so we can put houses right on top of each other all the way down Main Street. Maybe not over on Fish Hatchery Row. Does that, does that make sense? So that's kind of how the zoning lays on top of the the comprehensive plan. So I think, I'm not sure where you want to go with this right now. It's a potential, I think it's a budget issue. Creating zoning is not for the, um, it uh, it's not for laypeople, but you need, we, we would need professional planning help. It's a, it's a, it's a big, it's a big lift, like you need public meetings, you need to get, the, the public has to has to buy into this idea for whatever reason it is, or it, or they go nowhere.
Can we, can we talk a little bit amongst ourselves about how, you know, what the motivation here is and what is it we're trying to accomplish? What's the problem we're trying to solve?
Given our history with the zoning or maybe call it land use, a land use ordinance, it, it's not a uh thing that's been successful before. To spend the money for that.
My understanding is it's just, it's the, it's the recent development pressures. We have the, the sixteen unit subdivision on Cobsey there, that property. We have a sixty-three unit housing development up here on Main Street. I think that there's just, there's a certain element that's a little concerned that without any zoning, this stuff. I mean, maybe that's okay to the community, but when you don't have any zoning, this stuff can just go anywhere at once. Right, that's right. You can't control where the development happens or how dense it is.
We have three more solar projects here, folks, three more. What are you gonna do with them? Taking away our rural land and as long as they meet the current in the ordinance of five hundred feet from uh one that's already in place, planning board is stuck. Well, what do we do? It's vacant land, it's an owner selling, renting to a, a solar company. Well, I put it in.
As far as developments, uh, at our Cobsey watershed meeting, there's one being considered on Ward Road in North Carolina. I don't know how big it
We just, we just don't want to put this, right now in the comp plan, there's a block. We can't consider zoning because if somebody read the comp plan the way it's written twelve years ago, fifteen years ago, you can't go into zone. We don't want to put that block in. We want to leave that block out. So in five years or six years or ten years, whatever it is, we can, if if somebody sees that this is getting worse, wants to start zoning, we can. It's in the comp plan, I can, I can look at. You don't have to approve it, but it's, it's there, it's capable to be approved. That's all. Should we table this issue until the comp plan is, is finished?
But we have to give you guidance on the
I, I think we need some guidance from, from you, saying, yes, it could be a possibility, don't block it, just you know, let Isabel know that, no, we're not gonna do zoning this cycle, but, you know, don't block it. Don't, you know, don't put the roadblocks in.
Is there any um objective evaluation of how well zoning works compared to non-zoned?
I can say anecdotally, look at Western Avenue in Augusta, and if you think that that is a good way to lay out a city, that is because Augusta was the last city in the state of Maine to enact zoning. They didn't do it until the eighties. Most places did it in the sixties and seventies. So that's why you have shaws with pavement from the door to the street with no trees. And um as a former member of the, of the Augusta Planning Board, um, it's gonna take us a hun, it's gonna take the city of Augusta a hundred years to undo the mess that exists there, right? Because every, when they tear something down completely, you can then thrust the new owner into the new rule.
They're not under grandparented into.
Correct, so it's gonna, it's gonna take forever, so. And I'm not saying that every rural community needs zoning. They don't, but if the, if this community feels But if the, if this community feels that they're getting pressure, because with the new, with the new Sabatus exit on the turnpike and the proximity to Lewiston Auburn and Augusta, I, this is kind of the next natural place that people are going to want to put these massive subdivisions because they're right, twenty minutes in each direction and you can be at work. It's an, it's an, it's an attractive area to be, not, not to mention the, the waterfront. Um, if you keep, you keep seeing these developments and you don't mind that they just pop up wherever they want them, that's fine. But if you want to be able to control where they set up, um, you might want to consider it. I mean, that's just kind of how it. Do you want to control the way that the town looks twenty-five years from now, or do you want to just let it happen naturally? And that's, those are, those are community decisions, right? No, no, but, but those are community decisions. Like every community makes their own choice about that.
And I brought it up because several people have talked to me about it. So, and wanting to have some sort of say over where these things end up. So, and um, having some sort of policy and planning in place. And, you know, and what's the saying? An ounce of planning is.
I know, I know.
I can't think of it either, but uh, but I guess I'm thinking of the ounce of prevention is.
Right, yeah, right, right, right. That's where, that's where you're going. I know.
Prevention is worth a pound of planning or whatever it is. So that's, that's where, what I'm thinking, and I'd love to not have stops in the comp plan because I think we're, yes, we're small and we love what we have. That's why we live here. And I always go back to my father and grandfather. What was in their minds, I, what this, this town should be. And that's why I think we have to start thinking about this. And as, you know, people saying, I don't want to be told what I can do with my land. Well, that's, you know, it, it's hard. I mean, but I think if we want to maintain our rural deal, we need to start thinking about these things. So.
Well, we have um, we have a, uh, the November election is coming up and we're going to have uh, you know, it's expected that eighty percent of the electorate is going to be participating in this one. I mean, could we not ask through a survey to say, hey, is this, I mean, should the comprehensive plan prevent zoning in the future?
I don't see why the comprehensive plan, they, people don't understand.
No.
You know, as we found out, people don't understand what debt services, you think they're going to understand what the comprehensive plan move is? I mean, I didn't understand it until I got involved in doing this stuff.
People understand a sixty, uh, the, the desirability or not of a sixty-plus, you know, unit uh, development on Main Street.
About a sixty lot subdivision, but the complaint tells you what the people of Monmouth want to look forward to in the next ten years.
Years, yes.
It doesn't necessarily have to be that. It could, it could be other things.
So.
So you don't think we could design a survey question that would ask people what their opinion is on whether we should be planning for zoning?
We should.
It's the comp plan, it's.
Yeah.
All, all that I would, all that I would caution is that we have never seen the number of absentee ballot requests like this.
Exactly.
The whole state. Both parties are embracing early voting. I think we're going to have half the number of people that are going to vote on election day that they did the last presidential election, because everybody's requesting an absentee ballot. We have tiles of them right now in the town office. We've never seen this before.
Yeah.
People are just, they're, they're, they're voting early, early, early. Like they, they're filing it through the state. So I'm not sure. I mean, sure, there can be a.
Yeah.
Right, I'm not, I'm not sure how many people are going to show up election day.
But the whole. Newspaper said.
Maybe you'll be twiddling your thumbs. I don't know, but you, you should see them, don't it?
I saw them today. Close to two hundred thousand, I think it said we're at right.
Thank you.
It's unbelievable.
So, I mean, I, I don't want to put any stops in the comprehensive plan. I want the comprehensive plan to not have any stops in that. And then I think we need to start considering um having, you know, Isabel look at this for us or K V cog. But if the planning board is comfortable and likes working with Isabel, so here's the deal. I mean, she, you know, when I look at the planning board minutes now, it is, it's night and day from what it was. And to not have her, I mean, it just is the packets, I mean, it's all put together for you. Here's your information. Now you can, you know, and every, they bring everything with them. They make sure, she makes sure they have all of that. So keeping her on, because we're only going to see more. You know, it's not like we're going to see less.
So the, the biggest question is, in the past, at the last three complans that I've read, the word Z O N I N G had never appeared in print.
Oh, yes.
Print on this one, don't be screaming, uh, because, you know.
It's a possibility. It's an op, it, it's leaving the option open to move forward in that direction. And that's why when Justin's.
Say that word.
And then that's why when Justin read the, you know, the agenda item or, or when you read zoning ordinance, he said, boom, because the world's going to explode, you know? But, you know, but it's not that it's, it's planning. It's coming up with a plan. So.
I, you know, I'm curious where our resident libertarian stands on this. Mark, what do you think?
You're putting me right on the spot.
It's a conversation we certainly need to have. Um, I think the market is going to somewhat dictate right now with all these subdivisions they got planned. I mean, there's plans for a hundred and something house lots here in the town of Monmouth. Um, and quite a few of them are out of the price range of local people. And whatever, they could build ten spec houses and I bet not more than two of them are going to sell. Um, it's gonna somewhat control itself. Um, but I think it would be good to be able to put a thumb on it at some point if we need to.
So leave the door open.
I would agree with that, yes.
Well, how do we deal with item seven on the agenda?
Uh, so, so like I, like, like, we started with this. So Isabel says that she cannot deal with it. If you want, if you, if you wanted to contract with her, she couldn't do it today. She needs to finish the comp plan. Um, she's busy enough. She has other, she works for other people. She doesn't just work for us. So she said, if the comp plan gets approved, I would be more than willing to help the town through that process, but it would have to be afterwards.
So post-June.
I think, well, I think we're talking about, this is a, this is a budget discussion, I think. We, we'd have to have the money to do it, and we'd have to have some, um, you folks would have to know whether this is something that you want to spend a bunch of money on. Um, because eventually it has, the voters have to approve it. So I think maybe just bringing it up and then talking to your um, constituents, your neighbors or whatever, and seeing how they feel about it. And then you can decide as we go through the budget whether, you know, putting sixteen or twenty thousand dollars into the, keeping it in the budget for next year is, is worthwhile. If you think that it's just going to die on the vine, then, right, obviously you make that decision about whether it's worth budgeting for it or not.
Remind me what our number was for Isabel to do the comp plan. Because she started, she had a little bit last fiscal year and then the rest was.
Correct. The total is around twenty-five thousand over the two years. So if you, if you chosen the next budget, to be perfectly honest, that, that number that she put in there would basically be like a flat. So you would be, you'd be paying her the, about the ten thousand that we're paying her now to support the planning board.
Yeah.
And then you would keep the fifteen, sixteen, whatever that number ended up being, which is in there right now to finish the comp plan. So it would basically be a flat number.
Exactly.
For her to keep working at the planning board. Because this really is a planning board function.
Yes.
So they would, they would run this through their public hearing process. You would get it um, at the end, at maybe two years from now.
Maybe, yeah.
Who, who knows? But it would, it would come through at the end and, and your function would be a public hearing when you're developing the warrant. And whether you felt it was appropriate, whatever they developed to then pass to the voters.
Yeah.
That's your function in this process.
So I think it's definitely, you know, if it's flat in the budget, you know.
You're saying, don't use the word zoning, use land. We, we haven't been able to use the word.
Yes, in the.
In the plan itself, in the verbiage of the plan. They call it other things, but this, this time, we're, we're going to actually use the word. You know, that it could, you know, it's, it's an open issue. It's not that Monmouth is against all zoning. This is what's in there now.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I'd say, don't put any stops in there. That's my feeling.
We're just going to leave that one out.
Yeah. Yeah.
Because we have to come up with numbers for you guys.
Oh, I, I.
It's only, you have to change all the maps, you got to change all the computers, you got to change, there, there's a lot of external costs involved, plus what it costs to change it on the ground. And nobody wants to change. We just want the option.
Yes, to the option.
And, and Isabel has said that she could do it, but not.
Not until the, the complan, and, and the, and I'll just say, you're not, you're not in any place to, to, to make any decisions about this, but I just want to say this out loud that when you, if, if zoning is implemented and it's overlaid, everybody, whatever you have operating on that location at that time, it's grandfathered. It becomes a non-conforming grandfathered use. So whatever you're doing there, you can continue to do there forever. I just want to say that out loud because a lot, a lot of times people get confused. They're like, well, you lay a zoning and then you can't, you know, quick stock down here can't be there because, I'm assuming that is there, but you can't, you can't have that, a gas station there anymore. It, it doesn't matter. That's already there. So they can always, they can perpetually, any, anything that's already happening on a lot can continue to happen, even if it's a non-conforming use. Forever.
Why doesn't it make sense to table this item?
It's, I think that is a perfectly great idea, John.
I move that we take, let the table, I mean, set.
Second. You got a second?
Okay, great. All those in favor? Thank you.
No discussion?
No.
I might go back if I could. I don't know if I can. No, we just table. You've got your capoeira.
Back. Are considering spending three hundred thousand dollars to have a, a physician ride. Right. Are they actually doing that?
He's been doing that. Because there's been several articles in the newspaper about him doing it already. And how much money and how much it saves lines and having him there. And so he's, it's been, you know, I've read all those articles in the paper and it's quite impressive and he is.
They were using ARPA funds.
Yes.
And now that money's run out, so now they're putting it, so now it's on the tax rate. That's the, that's the issue. They decided.
These are very impressive.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Oh, but I always thought you're a paramedic.
EMT.
EMT.
Oh, you're an EMT. But a paramedic, I always thought they would, they would, they're better in that kind of a situation on an, on an ambulance than a physician.
It, it depends. If someone, if someone needs blood, he, he has the ability to do that where a paramedic doesn't. If someone needs certain medications that paramedics can't give, he can give. There, there is some benefit to it. You know, life flight is kind of the same thing, you know, they can give blood, they can do sort of things that we can't do on the ambulance.
I have to find one of those old newspaper articles. There's been several about him recently and about that program. It's really. Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the precedent seems to have been set. I would like to go back to the town manager reports.
Aw, come on. Thanks, Doug.
Sorry.
Saying sorry to him for.
No.
I, we want to, uh, the next thing.
No, Mr. Chair, I'm serious. Well, uh, well, there was a constituent complaint that I promised I would bring up.
You, yeah, and you forgot.
And I forgot until now. And it is regarding uh, the taxpayer-funded sign that sits on town property out in front of Town Hall. Um, that includes a certain politician's name that some would interpret as advertising because he's endorsed another candidate that will be appearing on the ballot. And I understand that that sign is probably outside the two hundred fifty-foot bubble.
And, and the town office is not a polling place.
Well, it is for absentee ballot.
It is, but it's not, it's not considered a polling place under, we register our polling places. This is our polling place.
Okay.
But, but let me, let, let's just. So I, I hear what you're saying. It is a taxpayer-funded sign. It is not a Monmouth property taxpayer. This is a federal grant that the Monmouth Water Association received. When you reach, when you take federal money, you are required to put up signs. That specific design with the fonts, the size of persons' names and all the logos are required under the federal grant. Every president does this. They like their names to be, I gave you all this stuff, right?
You know.
They asked if they could put it in front of Compton Hall. That sign is going to sit somewhere for eighteen months. I did not want it in front of Compton Hall. So that was my call to put it over there on that piece of grass. I tried to put it between the two town buildings so it didn't look like it was really in front of the town office. I understand um, people can feel however they want to feel about it. I'm fine with it. It's just, it has to go somewhere. And the Monmouth Water Association doesn't own any property on Main Street. It has to be within the vicinity of the project. It has to be somewhere on Main Street.
Don't, don't they have a, something on Blue Road?
They don't own any property.
They don't own anything. So.
Oh, that's the sanitary district. Sorry.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm confused. Okay.
If you would like me to take, to tell them to take it down, I have no objection. It's not the town sign. It's really not our problem. It has to go somewhere though. So they are going to have to find some place to put it. I didn't want it in front of Compton Hall. Compton Hall is a beautiful building. People take pictures in front of it. I didn't want that there. So this was, this was my next best option.
Is it possible that we could put it at the uh, the Civil War?
No, 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 no.
How about down at the beach?
Well.
Well, it's got to be close to the.
Has to be where the project is happening.
Yeah. And.
This is, this is almost pushing it down, yeah.
Well, exactly. I mean, it's.
How about the parking spots down there? Do we own that? Or do we still rent that?
We rent it from the trains company.
So, I mean, it, it's not in the center of town. It's not.
You want it for the firehouse. You don't have the real estate. You got a plow truck, blow the snow mic just.
Well, it's not in front of, you know, it's not the center of town. And you don't really notice it unless you come up Berry Road and see it. That's really the only way you see it. So I think this is the, not that I'm enamored with it, but I mean, it's where, I mean, there was one in front of the Grange Hall when the federal money went to the Grange Hall to be redone by the theater. There was one there for eighteen months and we all somehow survived that. And, you know.
We didn't, this is not, this is not a Monmouth project.
Exactly.
It's a water association project. We did not pay for that sign. We did not design it. We did not do, we were, the, the sign is dictated by the grant. It has to be that size with that font, those colors, everything. And the contractor puts it up. They just have to put it somewhere that we let them put it.
And you put it on social media that it's not ours?
But.
Well, I would just.
You asked me to, I'm happy to.
I would, that's what I would suggest. Put a, do a little Facebook.
Put a statement. Put a statement. Whatever you, whatever you. Whenever you, whenever you, I just tried, I really didn't want that in front of Compton, Compton Hall, it's beautiful. I don't want that in front of it. I think Dennis would have lit it.
So, well, I mean, I think that's the only, I never noticed it until I started using Blue Road to get around Main Street. Until I'm go, started going around. So.
I see it when I pull into the water.
You'll never catch me.
We don't own anything down there.
It's a fire department.
I would rather not have it in the center of town. I'd rather have it not in the center of town. I would rather.
Masons want it?
I'm sorry it's an issue. I just, I, this, this was the best solution I had when they asked me for that. I apologize. I think, I think a simple Facebook statement of explaining that it's, it's, it's a requirement of the grant and it's not a, you know, and we couldn't think of a better. endorsing any candidates for president.
But don't they get penalized?
If they don't, it's a, it's a condition of the grant. So it's like, if the thing's not up there and some federal person comes and it's not there, uh, uh, potentially, the water association could be, right, they could lose some of their money. So I mean, it, it has to be somewhere.
Thank you. Let's move on.
To consider a, uh, abating taxes for, uh, F- zero-zero-five lot, zero-one-six-dash-one.
So, L means multiple. So, I, I, I wanna be perfectly clear with everybody here so you know what's going on here. This is a relative of the person who owns the property. So this is a leased lot, which means it's a mobile home that doesn't own the land underneath it. So this is an accumulation of taxes on a mobile home, which is in terrible condition. But we do not have tax, um, liability on the land in which it sits. So, generally I would never bring mobile homes to you to ever foreclose upon, because if we don't own the land underneath it, we don't really have any. I, I have to take you to, I have to take you to small claims court. It's considered personal property. It's like suing somebody for a tractor. So, these, these usually don't come to you. But the issue is, is that this individual owns these back taxes, hasn't lived there in ten-plus years. The owner of the mobile home doesn't own the land underneath it, like I said, but the owner of the land owns a physical, owns a stick-built home on that property and is trying to dispose of this. Until recently, this person has been unwilling to sell it to the person who owns the land on which it sits. That is not the case anymore. So this individual is willing to sell the mobile home to the owner of the land, who's going to remove it and destroy it, so that they don't have this sitting on their property anymore. What I want to be very clear is that, as the treasurer, I am required to tell you whether this is uncollectible or not. I feel that this is uncollectible and I think that it's in the best interest of the town for you folks to write it off. But that being said, I know who this individual is and he's going to sell it to the other person. So, if you can kinda, it's a, I'm putting you in a, in a gray area. So this is, this I think is collectible because the person still exists who owns this thing. But I think in the grand scheme of things, the town is in much better condition to write this off. Let, let the owner of the mobile home sell it to the owner of the person who owns the land and a house next door for a dollar. I will not release our liens until that transaction happens. And then when that happens, I will release the lien. They will then own this thing and they can get it removed. And then it won't exist anymore. This, this one is a mess. And it's been sitting on our accounts since like before we, pre-two-thousand-ten, you can see, that's as far back as Trio goes. Before that, we were in Northern Data and it goes back six years prior to that. So no one has paid any taxes on this. No one's lived in it for a decade. I mean, it is a mobile home that is, uh, it, it belongs in a dumpster. So, um, I just want you to be very clear and that you're, if, if you, if you choose to write this off, it's gonna clean up a mess on our books. I think it's the right, my, my opinion is it's the right thing to do. And then, um, and then this, this will be gone. And then the, the owner will then be able to do what they want with their property. Right now they have a chunk of their land, which has this dilapidated trailer on it that they can't do anything with because they don't own it. Does that, does that make sense to everybody?
So, the sequence of the transaction you're suggesting is that we approve the abatement tonight, but you actually won't dispose of it until there's been a transfer.
That's what I'm telling you, yes.
And if the transfer of ownership is for a nominal amount, a dollar, whatever.
We don't, we don't care about that.
Then, it would be clear that there's no value to this, there's no, there's no, uh, uh, taxable value to this asset. There is none right now.
The, the trail, it's a liability. You know, it's gonna cost money to.
Yeah, for the, for the owner that's, for the, the owner of the land, it's a liability. They're gonna have to pay to get it moved.
Do we make the motion that we, um, abate, um, provided that, is it Dana Farley?
That is correct. So what, so what I have to do is, if you abate these taxes, I have to transfer the property back to Dana Farley, cause currently it's town tax-acquired. So I will transfer it back to him. And then once he does a bill of sale to the owner of the land, I will then release the deed. That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. So, if he doesn't transfer it as he's promising, I will not release these deeds and I will not dispose of the, of the tax debt. I will leave it on there. But that's the idea is, that if he actually transfers it and we can get this whole thing to go away, that then I will release the liens. But it is, it is nine thousand dollars. So I, I do, it's a significant amount of money, but there's nothing to collect on this thing. This, this building is not worth, anyway, it's not worth, it's, it's a, it's a negative. You'd have to, if, if we took it, we'd have to get rid of it.
Well, a, a move that we abate the taxes, provided that the owner of the mobile home transfers the, uh, the mobile home to the owner of the land.
Very good. Second.
So there's a motion by Joe, second by Ken to abate the taxes for this piece of, uh, property, providing that this procedure takes place. All those in favor? Thank you. Next is to consider a facade grant, an application from Monmouth Museum.
Presented, uh, so, you've all, you all have kind of a memo here from Reagan. Um, it's, uh, they're looking for a two-thousand-dollar match. It's a bunch of, bunch of notes in here, but they're looking at two in here. Right, I think it's for painting. I'm trying to, I just didn't wanna speak as also, replace a rotten sofa and fascia boards on the museum.
And, and would be.
A total cost of seventy-five-hundred dollars, however, the museum only needs two thousand for a match for the funding. The project will be completed next summer. We requested in the application that applicants submitted three quotes. However, the applicant unable to find local contractors, uh, the long stream has retrieved other facade improvement grants in the past. They're asking for two thousand dollars.
The Economic Development Committee.
Has, has, has supported that.
Yeah.
As part of this, uh, this application.
I make a motion, we approve this facade grant application for the Monmouth Museum.
There's a motion by Chris, second by Joe, to approve the Dodd Grant for Monmouth Museum. All those in favor? The next is to consider a facade grant application from the Monmouth Masonic Lodge.
Sure. So the Economic Development Committee reviewed an application from the Monmouth Lodge, number one-ten. For facade improvements, Lodge has placed, uh, replaced the part of the roof that is visible from the street and is requesting seven thousand three hundred dollars, which is half the cost of the job project. Typically, the applicant would apply for the grant prior to commencing work on the project. However, the roofing contractor had to complete the job within a certain timeframe to stay on schedule with other jobs. The Lodge has not received funding from Monmouth's side improvement program previously. The committee reviewed the attached application. They voted unanimously to recommend the select board approve this request for seven thousand three hundred.
I make a motion, we approve this application.
I'm second.
There was a motion by Ted, second by Chris, to approve the application of the Monmouth Masonic Lodge for the grant. All those in favor?
As the treasurer of the Masonic Lodge, I will abstain from this.
Before I, did you mind, Doug, before I, before I, um, read the warrant, can I ask the, the board's pleasure on the appointment to the school committee? So we, we posted this last week, but I know it's been a couple of, of weeks. It was put publicly last week. Um, to date, I only have one application. Um, would you like me to put this on your next agenda? Are you comfortable waiting another two weeks? The one application that I do have at this point is for, uh, Harold Jones is willing to serve until June. But I just, I, I just wanted you to know that I have this application. Um, and if you would like, we can wait until the next meeting. I just, I wanna know what your pleasure is. You guys.
Are we required to wait if it didn't appear on tonight's agenda as it was posted earlier?
I would, I would suggest that if you wanna do it, that it should be probably on an agenda in two weeks. I just wanna make sure that you're, you're comfortable, um, going kind of a month without a month, without a month. First, if you want, we could hold a, a, a special meeting during the week sometime that you could get this done. But I think it should be on an agenda. I just wanted to state that publicly before we kinda go another couple of weeks. If you're, if you're, if you're comfortable, we can just do it at the next meeting.
You have two members who.
It's not like they're making, it might make some policy decisions, but not budget.
It's not budget. You're right. I just wanted to, I just wanted you all to just be aware. I don't wanna hold anything back. So the next meeting, I will put it on the agenda. And if there's, if there's somebody else, well, you can consider any of them, but. Would you like me to read the warrant now? Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Annabessacook Lake Improvement Association, three thousand dollars, annual contribution to them. Bluework Earthworks Transfer Station Materials Transport, two thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars. Um, I don't know exactly what the setup too, cause I'm printing out CMP, uh, a couple of grants. Cause they're, they're all listed out here and I know it's more than a thousand dollars, I say that. EcoMaine, one thousand nine hundred and three dollars and ten cents. While I'm talking about EcoMaine, I will just say that, um, there was a, uh, they were at the MMA convention and, um, we found out that they have grants available for compacter trailers for recycling.
Is one of ours broken?
All of ours are, are old, old, old.
I heard that I.
Tony's gonna look into it, but.
I heard that one had to be put out back, cause they're not using it anymore.
Uh, there's problems with all of them. So it may be because that one doesn't work. Reason that, I wanna just mention that while I'm thinking of it is, if we can get a grant for that, I'm not sure what the strings attached are. And us getting out may not be in our interest. So let's just, let's just put, let's just keep that.
I'm just throwing it out there.
We define trouble.
We'll redefine. I can say we apply, we apply for the grant and it's not twenty-twenty-six yet.
That's true, but I, I, I'm, I'm just thinking that maybe the grant might have some, you know.
Attached to that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Well, listen, if there are strings attached to the grant and, uh, they know they've been put on notice, then maybe we'll be more likely to get it.
That's, that's a, that's a way to look at it, yeah.
Especially, this is like two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand a piece, right?
There are a couple, yeah, hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred-and-fifty, yeah, depending, yeah. They're expensive. I, I, a fire department testing, you, I don't know exactly what this is, do you? Host testing, okay. Okay, six thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Lower Shell Consulting, one thousand seventy-five, that's our, uh, economic development consultant. Maine Equalization Consultants, our assessor, two thousand four hundred and thirty-seven. Maine Waste to Energy, our trash, five thousand seven hundred and twenty-four. Maine Water Association, this is the, the hydrant payments. This is thirty-two thousand three hundred and thirty-one dollars. Uh, MyRec.com, this is the new platform that should be rolled up the next month or so, that'll allow us to take online payments for non-state, um, fees. Three thousand two hundred and ninety-five. Nickerson and O'Day, forty-nine thousand eight thirty-six, that's the building next door. Isabel, I don't know how to pronounce her last name. Do you know how to pronounce it? No, okay. So, well, we'll just go with Isabel. She's our planner. Two thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars. Uh, RSU Two, five hundred and forty-nine thousand three hundred and eight. School Department, State of Maine Bureau of Motor Vehicles, seven thousand two hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Tacoma Lakes Association, one thousand five hundred. University of Maine at Augusta, uh, Police Department Training, one thousand seven hundred and ninety-five for a grand total of six hundred and eighty-two thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty-six cents.
Mister Chair, I make a motion, we approve fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, warrant under eight.
Second.
So there's a motion by Ken, second by Mark, approve warrant eight for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five.
I make a motion, we adjourn.